The time is here for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First, the order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the crowds that have shown up tonight. Next item is March 12th minutes. Any changes, deletions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I move with the difference.
P R and Gins. Motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A hose like sign. Item three is quasi judicial. It's an item not on consent. The shops and villages at Lakeside Center, so anyone in the audience and/or staff that is going to speak needs to be sworn in, please.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This is a request for a major site plan approval for a 13-unit multifamily residential and commercial development to be known as shops and villages at Lakeside Center. John?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hamner. John McCoy with the planning staff. The proposal is for major site plan approval, and normally a commercial development of this size would be approved at the staff level. It's because of the residential, proposed residential development that it requires action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site is in Wabasso, north of 510. The slide shows the site. The portion closest to US-1 is zoned limited commercial, and the eastern portion is zoned RM6 residential multifamily, the six units per acre, as are the sites to the north and south. That zoning district boundary line runs parallel to US-1. It doesn't run along property lines, so it bisects several parcels as it goes north and south along there. Next slide is an aerial of the subject site with an overlay of the site plan, and it shows a home, a structure closer to US-1, and then the remainder of the site, and then the surrounding sites. To the south is a commercial plaza. To the east of that is a nursery. To the north and the east are agricultural pieces, although they're zoned multifamily, they're still agricultural pieces. And again, closer to US-1, it's commercial, but it's actually a residential piece. The site's a little, almost five acres, 4.8. The building area closest to US-1 is the commercial building, and that's essentially a strip plaza in an L shape. And then the residential is behind that. There's a single driveway on the north and a shared driveway leading back to the residential As far as traffic goes, the site is accessed by a single driveway on the north. It is limited to right-in, right-out movements because of the median. There is a right-turn lane required to access the subject site to serve the driveway, and the applicant's required to step out to the properties to the north and the south with driveways for driveway interconnections to both the north and the south. Other required improvements are sidewalks along US-1, internal sidewalks. The site generally complies with the Wabasso Corridor. They've got to give us a little bit more information as we get more details down the road prior to the plant release. The landscape buffer internal to the project along that split zoning line, and then the green space and recreation area meets the Growth Awareness Committee criteria.
The term generally complies, I mean, it will comply when we get it done.
Correct.
I mean, they have no choice, is that right?
That is correct. Everything that we've got so far shows compliance, and there are a couple more details, some signage, and other small issues to nail down as we go forward that we continue to look at, and that's why we've made that a condition.
Just want to make it clear they will, they have to comply.
Correct, and that is a condition of approval for to check compliance prior to site plan release. As far as drainage goes, the storm water will be treated in infiltration-exfiltration trenches and a wet retention area before being discharged. So the treated storm water will be discharged to a ditch to the east of the subject property. And the aerial shows the area where the ditch is. And then, as far as environmental concerns goes, there's no wetland impact on this site. You can tell that the site has been farmed before, at least the eastern majority of the site, and then the other parts have been maintained as a lawn. There's no native uplands on the site, no native upland communities. There are some trees that require mitigation, and they've addressed that on the landscape plan, showing the mitigation which will occur on-site. Brings us to the landscape plan. I'm just trying to hit some of the high points here. There's a buffer required, again, between the residential and the commercial, so they're buffering on-site. They've got the foundation plantings, which are consistent, required by the Wabasso Corridor Plan, and then they've got a landscape strip along US-1, which, again, is consistent with the Wabasso Corridor Plan. With that, I'd like to get to staff's recommendations. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant approval with the conditions as outlined in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John. Any questions of staff?
John, on that commercial property just to the south of this project, you have an entrance that's just past Rock City into that commercial property, and then you'll immediately start to turn lane just past that entrance? Is that correct?
The, let me see if I've got a slide that shows it.
Looks like it starts overlaps, is what you're saying.
It does.
Halfway down that commercial piece.
Or just, yeah. It appears to start right at that point, the taper starts.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes, I have a couple. The, sorry about that.
Help yourself.
The residential area, the buffering requirement along the south and the east, I'm not seeing a lot of additional plants that are going in there, so the vegetation that's on-site is being largely preserved along those boundaries. Is that a guess?
That is correct. What's native vegetation is being preserved, any nuisance exotic vegetation will be removed. That's correct.
And the stormwater tract, that, there's a requirement for it to be irregularly shaped, and that's being met by its, the design?
Correct.
This is something that you're seeing now?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a requirement for trees around?
There's a lake, there's, yes, there's a lakeshore planting requirement, which are three trees per hundred lineal feet of shoreline.
Okay, and so those details, the details of the grade and the planting around the stormwater ponds, the stormwater pond, that's going to be handled? That's not shown here? It's?
The, it is shown on the drawings the applicant submitted. There's a lot more detail to the site plan. They're proposing cypress trees around the lakes. They have moved those further back because there's a, a...
So it would seem. That's sort of what prompted my question. I see the trees are almost serving as buffer.
They are pulled back from the pond itself based on, again, some of the preference from an engineering standpoint to have a maintainable shoreline. Those could be moved closer to as long as their groups and still preserve access to the shoreline.
Yeah, I guess I'm just...
That was one of the dilemmas we had in the tree ordinance, is we wanted to add trees around these wet ponds, but within maintenance comes along and says they want to move.
That's all been changed now.
Yeah, I thought we took care of that.
That's out the window at this point. And I'm just wondering whether this, as configured on this drawing, I'm not convinced that this meets our current guidelines, does it?
The trees could be moved closer, and again, there's some latitude there in the design as far as how far they get pulled back. So in this case, they've taken them right essentially to the top of bank in some instances, which should be here.
I guess fundamentally, I can't evaluate what's going on in that area with the information I've been given. It's impossible. And so that's, I guess, just an alert that I think that since we have these requirements, and their grade requirements, and their requirements for...
You want me to be clear, it meets the current, clearly meets the requirement with no fudge factor.
And I think we're going to need some additional information in the future.
Okay, and we can also work with the applicant as far as clustering him closer, if that's...
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, Stan Balling, Planning Director, just if you all would like a little more information on that particular issue, we'll make sure to put that in the backup. Not a problem.
No, thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant care to be heard? You're Robert Leon now, yeah.
Robert Leon, MBV Engineering, 2455 14th Avenue, Vero Beach. The cypress trees that are shown on the, around the top of bank, they're on the pond, sorry, the wet pond, they are on the top of bank, so they won't interfere with the stormwater pond itself.
I think what he's just made, he wants to be sure that they meet the requirements of the latest ordinance.
Yeah, I think we need, we need some kind of profile and some information about what the...
Do you have that in the office, John?
The slope and the...
Yeah, what the slopes look like, and it's just pretty much impossible to tell from what we have here.
Yeah.
Well, what's the elevation of the inlet pipe? Because it's wet below there, and it's dry above there, so we can tell where the trees are, where the elevation of the trees are, and we can tell where the elevation of the water is. So I think we can divine from this drawing the information we seek. Is that a reasonable...
Robert, I can probably get you the information as he goes through the drawings, but from what I've seen here is they're at the top of bank, which is probably not going to be wet. It's probably going to stage up close to that area, because it's at the very, the very top of bank where...
But I can see on here a black square. Presumably, that is the structure through which the water flows out to the ditch, and that is pretty close to the top of the bank.
Correct.
I'm assuming that everything below there has a tendency to be wet, since this is wet retention, and everything above there has a tendency to be dry, and the trees are pretty close to the elevation of the top of that structure. So I don't think you can put the trees too much further down in there without them being, having wet feet.
Well, if they're cypress trees, it doesn't matter.
Also, if I may add the...
You understand my point.
Right.
The control elevation is actually a 4.1, which is that second contour. So that where John has the cursor right there, that's where the normal water level would be. The stormwater will only reach where, now where the cursor is during a 25-year storm event.
And that was the outfall that Mr. Zimmerman was talking about, and the trees are just beyond that outfall point, so it would stage up to this point, you know, storm.
And it's a pretty gentle slope. It's a pretty gentle slope, right? So there's not that much of an elev, you know, anyway.
Just to keep us focused and not spend all the time tonight landscaping, if it's all right with the rest of y'all, is that the real critical part here is that if we can't, if we don't see the detail, and we've proven there's questions, then either need to go see staff, or we need to have it provided to us, but I think the answer here is pointedly is to staff to be sure they meet the criteria, and, you know, no F'ans, or words of bust, no fudge factor, just that's what I think we're looking to say here.
I would agree.
Okay? You had, is that, that was on the run.
Steph knows where I'm coming from. I mean, we sweated bullets for...
Trying to get this right.
Over the landscape ordinances, and so, and this was part of it.
Any, okay, any statement by the applicant and/or anybody has questions of the applicant? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Stephen Lulich. Good evening, all. I'm one of the managing partners of the LLC, Lakeside Development, and I just wanted to just give a bigger picture. Of course, I have the engineers here and the engineers here, but I'm not an engineer. And all I wanted to express was, if you look at the drawings, and I don't know how much they've given you, and I guess in some cases, not everything, but what we tried to do when we put together the concept originally was to create something that was different. And by what I mean is different is that we had a piece of property with two zonings, and we wanted to make something that looked different. So the elevation of the front of this building looks like a two-story building with some make-believe windows up on top. It's something creative, sort of like a southwestern type of look. At the same time, the building slopes off to the back. It's a metal roof, and it has a gradual slope, and the residential buildings have the same type of metal roof. And so what we tried to do is take what was in most areas called a thump, okay, and make it a lake, we're going to put a fountain in it, and we tried to dress up around it so that the residential units had some varandas on the lakeside, and that the, most of the offices would be the lakeside portion where the retail would not be directly on the lake, so that if a professional wanted to have a conference room overlooking the lake and a little veranda out the back, looking from the residential, we're looking at what looks like residential. And we're giving an amenity to the offices to have lake view. So we tried to create something that looked nice, okay, and looked appealing. In addition to that, when we first started out, we found that we could do some 23,000 square foot on this site, and we toned it back to, I guess, about 18,500 or so. And the reason for that is we figured, well, you're going to have these nice villas in the back, and, well, why just go an office strip? Why just go a retail strip, okay? Let's give them the ability to have a little restaurant up there and a medical, a doctor's office, and so that they could have mixed use, so that it's sort of like taking what they, what they have in the big concept of a self-contained neighborhood and doing it on a small site. And so we thought we would make it attractive by doing that, and so, you know, of course, we hope you'll give us the approval. Thank you.
Excuse me, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Any other thoughts? Let's not get carried away.
My name is Cynthia Cox, and we own the 25 acres directly north and east of this property. I'm not sure what the status of the application is today, but I want to note for the record that this notice of this meeting was mailed to us on March 23rd. We received it yesterday. We have not had time to review all the materials on the website, and in addition, Tom Lowe, who is our neighbor to the east of this property, has been at each and every meeting, each and every presentation of this project, and I have a feeling that he did not get notice of this meeting. So I want to object on that basis, there was not proper notice. This project impacts our produce farm, and I think that, you know, if they're allowed to do it, I know there's been several issues with these, with the runoff and some of the stormwater and some of the other issues, but we really haven't had time to review it. I just want to note for the record that we are objecting, and I think Tom Lowe is the Chair of the Wabasso Corridor also needs to be present. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me, Stan, would you explain notice?
Sure.
On this, on an item such as this, which is not a public hearing?
That's correct. There's no notice requirement in the code for this type of approval. It is a permitted use, however, since, I believe, there's been a few technical review committee meetings for this over the last, I think, at least a year, and as a courtesy notice, we've notified the property owner to the north, Delman, and a representative has been there at the technical review committee meetings. We copy him on all the correspondence that goes out, and Mr. Lowe, because he's the Chairman of the Wabasso Task Force, so they have been notified by regular mail, all in due course, but there's not a, you know, when we send the letter to the applicant, we copy those parties, and so it's kind of a courtesy notice that's been done. It's not a required-by-code sort of notice.
Right, okay. Thank you. Was there somewhat a comment? Did I miss, cut somebody off? Okay.
If I could just suggest, I, my recollection from technical review committee was that one of the big, probably the biggest concern of the property owner to the, it was probably to the north and to the east, was drainage in that particular area. So what we intend to do as staff is when, you know, the detailed stormwater permit process comes through and it's being reviewed by county engineering to notify the applicant of that, so that they can, if they want, have, you know, take a look at the detailed stormwater situation, because that seemed to be the...
The main thing is, have they got clear drainage rights through the property, the other property, or not? They do have clear drainage rights?
The legal positive outfall issue was one, and John, if John wants to describe it, I mean, but yeah, that was, that was a big issue.
If there were any, I suppose that considering that, if there were any sizing, size of ditch or size drainage issues, they would be probably incumbent upon the applicant to rectify?
That's correct. Has historical drainage has to, coming on the site and through the site, is addressed as well as legal positive outfall?
A lot of times, piling dirt, I mean, it gets to be, you know, you've got an issue of how you finish the project, but I guess that that's what the drainage easement is supposed to address, right?
That's correct, and one of the main impacts, I think, on this particular site is how much the elevation drops off as you go to the east and the amount of filling on the eastern end of the project. But again, I know representatives have been at the technical review committee, and staff intends to notify them of a more detailed engineering review when the time's appropriate.
Okay.
And Stan's recollection is true. Drainage has been a major concern, and I've got the aerial backup, and you can see, right, at the southeast corner of the site, there's that little vegetated area, and through the technical review committee meeting, the engineering department did ask the applicant, actually applicant's engineer, to trace the water course and show that it did have outfall. And once they get to that point, there are, as I understand it, two different sort of categories that they could fall into. One is they have an easement over that site, which they can document.
They've got to document legal...
If not, if they can show they have historically outfall, then engineering will hold them to that historic discharge rate. So there could be two different potential parameters. One would be if they have an easement, they have more rights, greater rights, and the others, they show historic, and they have the rate of, right of historic outfall. And that is something that engineering did look at in some detail at the engineering TRC level, and then we'll look at it in more detail as they go through to the Type B.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Thomas Delerman.
Excuse me, it's not sworn in.
You're right, I apologize. You have to be sworn in in order to speak. It's quasi judicial.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I'd like to know what's being designated or called a historic ditch, because I've asked this question before.
That's not something we, that's, you have to check with staff. We can't answer that.
Well, I just, you know, you just mentioned the fact that...
Let me clarify something real quick, just for you and the ladies earlier. This is really not a public hearing. We asked for comments, and we'll accept comments accordingly, but we are dealing with the specific issues in what would be an item on consent for a permitted use. So if we can't answer it, I just, before we go into long harangs about the ditches, just make sure we, we'll make note, but that's...
Well, maybe I'll just say for the record that I don't, being an adjacent property owner, I don't, I don't know what's being designated or called historic ditch, number one, and number two, I don't know if any drainage rights he has through my property. And there was a ditch that was recently dug about five years ago on my farm, and if that's being called historic ditch, I'd like to know what...
I think that, I think what the staff was making clear, and that as in their recommendation, one of the things for your sake as well on approval, is that they have to show legal and/or some form of historic drainage that is applicable to this property. And some, you have to assume somebody can figure that out.
I understand.
But if you, from a record standpoint, it's clear that the staff, I think, then they admit drainage has been a big issue here, and I probably, looking at this with the property surrounding it, I would suspect that's true of several pieces of property up that way.
Okay.
Okay, which property were you in?
It's, well, I'm to the north of the project and also to the east. See, the...
Are you part of the farm?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Delerman has expressed these concerns at TRC and before, and his property wraps the applicant's property on two sides, the north and then the east. That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And he has...
Yeah, see, the far eastern border of his property comes up to where my drainage ditch is, and it will affect me, and I was just concerned about...
The interrelationship in those areas with those old groves, there's, there is historic precedence, that much I feel certain, but I'm not sure, I couldn't tell you which ditch and where. Somebody would have to track that back.
I guess what my point was, what I should say maybe for the record as well, is that there has been no ditch to drain this property, for say, with no drain tiles, no culverts, there's no, been no drainage ditch ever exists for this property.
Okay, thank you.
Your word.
Any questions of staff or speakers?
Stan, what you're saying is that although there isn't an opportunity for the speakers to become involved in this meeting, that as it goes through the process, there will be adequate opportunity for them to have interaction with staff and...
That's correct, and that's not unusual. We do these courtesy notices, especially for this particular site, and they've been involved and can continue to be involved. You know, at some point, whether they hire an engineer or not to take a look at that, that's their, that's certainly their right and their option, if it needs to go that way.
Well, I mean, I think it's clear that they've made it clear drainage is an issue, and if it's not clear in the recommendations, should this go forward, I think we probably need to make sure it's clear. Anything else?
That, these issues would be addressed in getting a Type B stormwater permit?
That's correct. These are the types of issues that would be addressed, and we'll actually talk to Public Works and make sure they're very aware that this issue's ongoing.
Okay, okay. So perhaps we ought to call that out in our...
Right, I think it would be helpful, make clarify. Any other thoughts? Okay. I need a motion to...
I'll move approval with the additional recommendation, add a fourth recommendation that we make, that the applicant, that in the process of obtaining the, excuse me, let me find this, the Type B stormwater permit from the Public Works Department, that the adjacent landowners be given a courtesy notice of when those meetings are occurring, and that they will be allowed to participate, to address these drainage concerns.
And that the drainage concerns are clearly...
And that the drainage concerns are going to be addressed and resolved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Greg. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the Commissioners Matters. Does anybody have a Commissioner matter? Well, that's good. Anybody have a...
I'd like to comment, George, on the handouts. Is this the proper time?
Yes, sir, go ahead. This is time for a Commissioner's seat. Raise issues and/or tell us the outcome of any lottery tickets.
You told me short and sweet. I just wanted to comment on the handouts that you gave us. I always enjoy those, and I was glad to see that Florida's now competitive with Georgia for peaches.
We're not changing the tag yet.
But it is interesting to see the things the University of Florida has done with genetics in the last 10 or 15 years, and I know that there are a lot of crops now that are going to be available in Florida that in the past we haven't had the opportunity for. I know pears now, which I love.
And I know pears now, which I love, are down to about 120 chill hours, so there are a lot of good things happening that will be associated with tag in the future, I think, in the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Under planning matters, anything there, gentlemen?
The main thing, I'm just, in case you all hadn't heard or read about it, since your last meeting, the Board of County Commissioners adopted an ordinance to temporarily suspend for six months from April 1st to the end of September, five of nine impact fees, and that would apply to commercial or residential projects. The idea being to get...
In our discussions, I think we asked you, though, how many projects you thought would get in under that window? Did you all have ever come up with a number?
Yeah, in six months, it's not...
We have some numbers. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Well, I think, I think the numbers, we have a number...
Did we feel like there was anything in the pipeline that could be affected, or have we got time for something to get to the pipeline to be affected? I guess it'd be a better way of looking at it.
Yeah, I think we've got several hundred thousand square feet of non-residential that's in the pipeline. Some strip centers, a Publix, some hotels, so we have several.
Really? That we don't normally see here?
Right, a lot of those are staff-level approvals, yeah. These are projects that haven't been approved yet but are in the pipeline and probably could move through in a six-month period and maybe get to the point of submitting for a building permit.
Oh, okay.
Well, we do hope to try to, you know, keep track and quantify, to note if there are any changes as a effect of it, and I think that's the purpose, the board wants to take another look in six months and see...
That was better than I thought. The impression I had before was that we didn't have, the six months was not a window wide enough to help in general, because it took, if someone started today, they'd be lucky to get through in six months. So I'm glad to know we have something out there, and maybe they'll move ahead. So, what else?
Well, I think Mr. Smith just pointed out that Florida's more than a football school. Certainly, that could be a basketball school right now, but, yeah. So, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Under attorneys matters?
Nothing tonight.
Well, thank you all for coming, and hopefully the drainage issue will solve, be solved, and we are now adjourned.